Okay, we're live. Great, sounds good. I will now call to order the September 4th, 2024 Special Board of Education meeting for Chico Unified School District. We are in open session. It is just after 5:00 PM. During our special board workshops, we do closed session after our open session. So we will be going to closed session after this period of time. With that, I would like to ask everybody to please stand for the flag suit. Alrighty. I think we're all just getting into our accounts so we can see presentations on our small screens. Sometimes it's a little too small on the big screen for us. So we like to follow on on our, follow along on our Chromebooks. Our next order of business is consent calendar. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment on consent? Or anybody that would like to pull any items from consent? Okay, so you none last for a motion, please?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Lando and a second by Member Conken. We're gonna do a voice vote, since this is our first of the evening, we'll start with Mr. Tennis.
Aye.
Conken aye.
Dolby aye?
Lando aye.
Robinson aye.
Great, it's unanimous, it passes, thank you. Next up on our agenda is the board workshop. The topic is informational this evening on after-school programs, pre-kindergarten, transitional kindergarten, and kindergarten for the 24-25 school year.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Heather Sue Fuentes, I'm the Director of Elementary Education. And we are super excited to share with you two massive programs that are taking place in our district. We have two important people with me this evening, Callan Kwak Hennessy, who will be rejoining us in just a moment, and Kathleen Corbett. They really are the experts in this realm of work that has been happening in our district. And so our goal tonight is to highlight some of the areas that we've seen major growth in both of the programs, where we're headed, what we're excited for, and some of the things we're still considering in how to keep growing. So I'm gonna start, oh, I don't have the clicker. Oh, you come up pretty fast. Okay. Big button?
Arrow.
Arrow. Got it. Okay. So I wanted to start with this slide to talk a little bit about early education because it's a gigantic umbrella that has really evolved over the last couple of years and encompasses some very large programs underneath it. So when we refer to early education, we're talking about preschool, transitional kindergarten, and kindergarten. Most of tonight's presentation is really on the preschool and the TK programs that are in place. This quote is something that was brought to our attention from our TK work with teachers as we were evolving. And it kind of encompasses the goal of this early education. So it says, "There is undeniable evidence on the profound benefits of early educational environments and the critical role they have in nurturing young children's social and emotional skills, strengthening emotional regulation, social problem solving, and leading to reductions in behavior." So this early childhood movement is really helping to forge the path for our students to be even more successful when they hit kinder. This is the official kind of definition of early education programs. It refers to the environment that provides an education component of curriculum that nurtures the learning and development of the whole child, including all domains covered in preschool, transitional kindergarten, learning. And underneath is a great resource if you'd like to dabble in it some more. That's from the California Department of Education and it goes over the foundations. The program structure of early education has evolved. California's early learning standards for preschool and TK are called the foundations. And with that, it's meant to convey that they're learning in every domain that they'll see as they transition kinder through 12th grade. But the foundations are really designed to recognize the early education years and understand that it's a major time for their physical development, their cognitive development, their language development, and their social-emotional growth. This is just a quick snapshot for you that, again, shows the concrete goals for the foundations. They're written to illustrate the inclusive learning opportunities for all children. And they acknowledge that each child is unique and may require different approaches to demonstrate their development. The colors on the side, that shows that the approach to learning encompasses social-emotional development. And within it, they're still hitting all of those content foundational pieces as well. So now I'd like to welcome Kathleen Corbett, who oversees all of the state preschools and who is also part of the Loma Vista Early Child Learning Center.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to talk about the Early Learning Center and the state preschool program for Chico Unified. We currently have multiple preschool programs, working in collaboration with speech therapists, occupational therapists, social workers, as well as special education teachers to provide an inclusive and high-quality early learning experience for the children and families, all from the one location at Loma. We currently have six full-day, full-year state preschool classrooms, along with three special education classrooms for Chico Unified. So the mission statement or kind of goal of our program is to provide a nurturing environment through collaboration of programs for an inclusive community where families and teachers partner to provide children with high-quality social and academic foundation for a successful education through intentional play and hands-on learning. So that includes all the building blocks of getting a child ready to enter the elementary school campuses.
Can I pause you just for a second?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Bondur, can you hear our speaker in the back?
Oh, am I?
Pretty well. You can. It's just a little hard for me to hear up here. Like, I can hear it, but I don't really hear much over a speaker. I don't know if it's just me, but I can hear you.
Is it me not talking close enough?
Maybe be a little bit closer.
Okay.
But also just for our tech guys.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how that translates over our video either.
Okay. Is that a little better?
Yes, thank you.
The state preschool program is funded by CDE through, the contract is with CDE and it's a California State Preschool Program. The funding is based off of attendance and enrollment. And the funding can only be used for CSPP expenses. The state is really firm about that. Our staffing structure ratios, we have a one-to-eight adult-to-child ratio, which is a Title V requirement. We have one site supervisor and two preschool assistants for every 20 children per classroom, so. The registration process, we provide free and low-cost early education services to three- to five-year-old children. Families can register at the Loma site. And they do have to meet the state preschool income guidelines, as well as the need qualifications. We are a full-day, full-year program and open 246 days a year. And our hours are 7:45 to 5:00, Monday through Friday.
I'm sorry, can you clarify when, I'm just trying to remember. Is it when they're eligible for kindergarten that they are supposed to go into the kindergarten program? Or is it first grade?
We can have three- to five-year-old children. So once they start kindergarten, they, our license doesn't allow us to have those children in our classrooms.
Five-year-olds is kind of a gray area, so.
And that'll come up in TK, but if they turn five by September 1st.
Okay. Then they're not qualified. So if they're five by September 1st, they no longer qualify for the preschool program?
No, there's an overlap.
Okay.
Technically, some parents choose to stay with preschool rather than TK.
But not kindergarten? That's where it's confusing.
Right, that's where the line is, yeah.
Thank you.
And just to show the growing enrollment of our program, in '22-23, we had about 60 children enrolled. '23-24, we got up to 80. And now for this fiscal year, we have 120 children within those six classrooms.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead a little bit to the waitlist.
Yes.
The current waitlist is 79, but it's my understanding that usually is somewhere between 65 and over 100.
Right.
Any time of the year.
It fluctuates.
For multiple years, I mean, two years ago, I looked into applying and I was like, I don't even know if I'll ever get into the program, so I'm not gonna go through all the paperwork to even try to apply. So it's not just a current waitlist, but on average, over the last three or so years, it's consistently averaging about probably 80. I would say, anecdotally, from my observations, not based on your data.
Right, right, just from what you've seen.
Because it's, I think it's important to note that because in '22-23, there were 60 that were enrolled and still, you know, 100-plus that were on the waitlist. And even though we have doubled the number since '24-25, there are still 80 kids on that, were little ones on that waitlist.
Right.
So the need is growing as the capacity is growing, is growing, which is kind of what I wanted to make sure that we were highlighting here.
Yeah, for sure.
I had a question too, on the preschool registration slide. Okay, is that better? On the preschool registration slide, it says, "Families register at the Loma Vista site and have to meet the state preschool income guidelines and need qualifications." Could you explain what the need qualification is?
Because it's a full-day, full-year program, the need is either working, going to school, or looking for work for the parents. So this, because it's a full-day program, the state wants to make sure that the need is there for the family. And then we contract hours based on that need. So even though we're open 7:45 to 5:00, everybody has different contract hours based on the need that they, that we verify. Is there any other questions about that?
Are we still on your presentation?
Yes.
What are, what are our current constraints on expanding the program to meet the needs of those other 80 average kiddos that are on the waitlist?
Once a year typically, but not every year, they do offer expansion funding. We can't just open a classroom because there are children on the waitlist. As that, I think that does happen in TK. For our program though, they cap us at 120 full-day slots. And then when that funding comes up again, it comes around, usually around January or February, that's when we would apply for that.
So it's, it's something that is, you can count on?
Kind of, it depends on the budget.
Budget, yeah.
Absolutely. The state budget, yes.
I can add something too. We applied last year, Michelle Bunch and Kathleen Roat for expansion, but because of the state budget, it was denied. There was no expansion offered to anybody out of the California state budget for this upcoming, for this year. It's not to say that won't change.
Hopefully it will, yeah.
We hope it does.
And it has consistently, but we can't guarantee that will happen.
Yeah.
And they didn't take anything away, so that was good this year. It's like, we can stay stable.
Oh, good, they could take it away too?
They can, yeah, yeah.
That's scary. Riding a little bit of a wild wave there, huh?
Yeah, for sure.
So January, February-ish expansion is typically offered but not guaranteed from the state. And they could potentially even take funding away. So right now, we have nine total classrooms serving this.
Six are state preschool, the three are specifically for special ed or ESN classes.
Right, that's special ed preschool classrooms, right? So that's students that are, special ed students that are five years and younger?
Yes, 3- to 5-year-olds, yeah.
Okay. And then a clarification question, because I don't know that this has been conveyed, not even from my own understanding, fully, because I haven't asked the right questions and I, I, you know, we all have things going on. And it's an important question, so I don't mean to make it sound like it's not, but there was a discussion several years ago, in my time, so not too long ago, about Innovative and how they had been housed at this campus. And then there was a transitional period. And so I just want to make sure that we are clarified about what, what happened to Innovative? Or is that now fully transferred over to Chico Unified and just?
So, great question. Innovative is in their last year of a MOU with us. And so at the end of this year, they won't be under the Loma roof anymore.
Okay. And so is Innovative still at the, under the Loma roof, above and beyond what's being offered under the state preschool classrooms?
Yeah, so it's operating as a private entity for one, and they've scaled back. They just have one classroom now.
Right, okay. So there's six state preschool classrooms, three special education classrooms for preschool, and then Loma, not Loma. Innovative is still here for this last, this is the last school year with Innovative?
Yeah. And then we're hopeful we get grant money and can expand, but that's at the state level.
Is there space to expand?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one of the parts that I didn't highlight that's very beneficial is that the six preschools were all operating off of different elementary sites. And so now, as Loma is evolving, we have the opportunity for our students to have inclusive time with gen ed students, as well as this umbrella to really hone in. You're not the solo ship that's teaching preschool now. You can walk down the hallway and have somebody to collaborate with and to talk through program and next steps with students. So it's really in, it's in its next phase. I've been referring to it as kind of an onion, as it's been developing. And, and we're in the next layer now of really having it be a Chico Unified Early Learning Center, which provides a lot of resources as well.
And that's at Loma Vista?
Yeah, and it's Loma Vista.
On this campus, but it's its own campus?
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah. And so just to recap on that, under the Loma umbrella, we have, this is the first year that we've pulled in all of the state preschool sites from the individual school sites that existed prior to this year to the same campus. And there's one innovative classroom. And so six state preschool, three special education, early learning, and one innovative.
Yes.
Under the Loma umbrella. And yet, there's still capacity, if there's funding, to expand that to, to more students.
Yep.
Do you know kind of a ballpark number off the top of your head? Like, what do we have the capacity for? The sky's the limit, depending on funding? I mean, where are we at here?
The footage of the classrooms and classrooms that are available.
Because it goes with the licensing of it. So eventually, we'd love to have the, the whole building licensed, but that's a process too, until we fill the spots.
Okay, so that's like future goals?
Yes.
All right. Is there other funding sources besides the, the one with the expansion?
Yes, there are other creative ways to do that. We've been kind of brainstorming some of those if that didn't come through. Because we could do our own private pay type of thing, you could run some part day.
You're, yeah, not too close, not close enough to the microphone. So can you repeat what you discussed? Because I think that that's an important thing that might come up also later this evening.
There are a lot of different ways to fund that. It could be private pay, there's a lot of different creative ways that you could go about that.
Is it possible, sorry, I cut you off. Is it possible to do almost like a tiered structure where the highest need, lowest household resources?
Like sliding scale?
Family, yeah, like a sliding scale, kind of. Whereas somebody who's maybe a little bit more able could put some more money, you know, and pay into it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so is that something that is on your guys' to-do list to sort of explore further and look into those, like you said?
Other options for pay and that kind of thing?
Creative, creative ideas.
Exactly.
Great.
To fiscally make that work.
So there's room in the facility. We're just seeing to figure out how to fund expansion to meet those up to, up to 80 more or plus 3- to 5-year-olds that we would love to see at the Loma site. Yeah?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I capitalized on that, but I had lots of questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, so this is kind of moving in, we did it in sequential order. So now we're moving from preschool into TK. And this gives you an understanding of where TK has evolved. So back in 2012 is when the Kindergarten Readiness Act changed and the Introns State of Kinder created a TK program. In 2014, 2015, Chico Unified started our TK classes. We had five classrooms at that time and they were started with a grant through First 5. In 2019, the governor started to move to create the Master Plan for Early Learning and Addressing Access to Care, High-Quality Universal Transitional Kindergarten. And additional monies were allotted. In 2021, we, the state increased their budget and the governor pushed the UTK forward. And in 24-25, we are now currently required to offer TK for any student that is eligible within our district. This is, just to give some oversight, the other part that's been kind of complex with TK is that there's been a sliding scale of age and when you become eligible for it. So you could look back in 2022 as it was starting, your cutoff date was that you were five by February 2nd. It moved to April 2nd in the 23-24 school year. Currently, it's by June 2nd. And as we approach next year, your fourth birthday is by September 1st. So technically, we may have a handful of 3-year-olds starting the school year with us in our TK program because they will turn four and be for their whole academic year. And that's what we're currently working with, is the age getting younger and younger and becoming early educators. So enrollment history, to give you a little background on how it's been growing within our district. In 22-23, we had nine schools and 10 classes with 211 students participating in transitional kinder. In 23-24, we expanded to 11 schools. We had 13 classes and 305 students. And currently, we're sitting at 11 schools offering TK programs with 15 classes and 343 students. So at some of our larger sites, Emma Wilson, Marigold, both have two programs, as well as Hook Rock and Neil Dow are offering two classes.
Just two points, maybe more for clarification. Just a reminder to those who maybe don't come to every school board meeting and keep track of every decision that we make. The 11 out of 12 elementary schools in our district that offer TK currently is all of them except for Shasta. And that's a decision that the board made last year because of the size of Shasta and the difficulty in expanding it size-wise to fit the number of students. And so this board made a decision last year to, to limit Shasta as a K5 school and have TK at all the other 11 schools. I had a question for clarification, kind of in the last slide. This slide is, it's still relevant. When you say that we're now required, I think I'm in the wrong spot on my own slides, we're now required to offer TK to all students who are eligible, that means, does that mean that within Chico Unified School District boundaries, any child that hits that right now, that June 2nd cutoff date, and next year, that September 1st cutoff date, fourth birthday, September 1st, have to have, we have to have space for them offered in the district? We can't turn anybody away because we don't have space left.
Yep.
We have to. And I, it, am I understanding correctly? Did we have some like last-minute flurry of like needing to add another classroom here or there, this year even?
We did. And then our numbers, and then some parents choose to stay at preschool positions or they get into some other school. So our numbers balanced out. But we were, we were on the cusp of opening another one if we needed it.
I will say by experience that it is terrifying, being a new parent to the school system and walking on that elementary school campus with your very young 4-year-old and in the future, 3-year-old. That is crazy to me. Not in a bad way, but just like mind-boggling. And be like, okay, here you go. And my child told me yesterday that she was able to walk by herself from the cafeteria to her classroom. And I've walked with her lots of times and it's, that's, it's, our children rise to the occasion for sure, but I understand parents who are like, actually, maybe I'll just wait. And, and we have that, we as parents have that option at this time, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not compulsory.
Not until kindergarten 6.
So people with a TK-aged child can wait until kindergarten. Is it compulsory in kindergarten?
Six, when you're six years old.
Six years old. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, no problem. And it is terrifying.
Think I might change my lifestyle and go on some road trips for the next two years. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I think you made a good point. What's really impressive to watch as you, as these transitional kindergartens have been part of the school campuses is exactly what you referenced, how independent the students become very quickly and they like it. So often, last year, I would have by this point, third week of school, parents trailing in behind them because their kids were telling them, no, 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 you don't need to come with me, I have this. And they knew exactly where to go. So that's a testament, I think, to the routines and procedures that our, our schools set up. So it is wonderful but scary at the same time.
Anybody here who's met my kiddo knows that that's exactly what she's been doing, so.
You're not alone.
Yeah, it's interesting.
So the program goals of transitional kindergarten have kind of morphed. For a long time, it was, when it was first starting, there was a lot of discussion of, is this kinder watered down? And the answer is no. It has really, with those foundations in place and the, the thinking through of how to roll it out, it is, the goals for the program are for students to, to have access to learn the rules and the routines of classrooms and really, they're tiny little humans, how to be students at school. They learn procedures, protocols, norms such as recess, lunch, fire drills, so that they're prepared when they jump into the more academic setting of kindergarten. They also provide an academic foundation while focusing on developing the social emotional growth of students. So there's a lot of learning happening through play-based but academics at the same time. In addition, they're implementing in TK in all of our kindergarten classrooms our Tier 1 instructional practices. So there are common focus points for all of the teachers that correlate with our MTSS, as well as what's best for kids in this grade to be learning. The TK registration process begins in December and there are postcards that are sent to every residential address in Chico Unified, as well as posted on our websites. There's Aries Communication and social media. Registration is complete when parents bring in birth certificate, proof of residency in their immunizations to their home school. And then the first round of placement for students begins in January. The strengths of our TK program is really that it is mirroring our multi-tiered systems of support, starting now at the TK level with the social, emotional, behavioral, and academic focuses. TK is offered at every one of our sites except for Shasta. And four of our schools are currently offering more, are offering two classes. And then TK is also having the opportunity to participate in our enrichments on campus, such as music and fine arts. All right. Any TK questions? Thank you. So now I'm gonna enter, oh, go ahead.
I just, I have a question about growth. And maybe, I don't know if we have an answer about this yet, but I guess I'm curious for future facilities modeling, et cetera, if, if the growth is, is kind of mirroring what we have been expecting to happen? Or if we're falling, if we know if we're falling under or over that at this, at this point?
I, I think we're right on target. We just read it with, McManus has expanded their, with their building facilities. And then the next round, Emma Wilson is also gonna be up for some kinder expansion as well.
And I will say also, Julie Kissel is always brought into conversations when we talk about expansion of TK. She's obviously got to be involved in the, in that, in the conversations that we have. And there is some funding, you know, Heather had mentioned some of the funding that comes through. It is not a ton of funding, it's not nearly close to what we would like. But we make do with it for training and Julie really does know a lot about, she's come to know a lot about the program so she can look at facilities that mirror the supports the program needs. So she kind of goes above and beyond in that regard.
And I'll just further add to that. We've been planning one to two classes a year, which is kind of what's materialized from a budgetary perspective. This year with that potential third one, it kind of threw me for a loop, but it didn't materialize. So from numbers of incoming 4-year-olds, it's kind of been on par with what we have projected. Julie and her team do an actuarial kind of demographic study and we look at that as far as estimation of number of 4-year-olds coming in. And there are three schools that are getting TK expansion facilities. We're actually selecting architects next week. So that's a great opportunity for those three schools and to have additional facilities related for these little 4-year-olds.
Great. Yeah, I think that when we were doing our facilities master plan update, that was a little bit more of a question mark when it comes to surveying and predicting and watching the demographic, you know, trends is, we don't know how many people are gonna follow through with putting their kiddos in. with putting their kiddos in, in TK. And, you know, we already talked about some of the hesitations, why? Excuse me. So I was just curious about being on track or on target and not, obviously being blindsided and not having enough facilities or having empty classrooms, you know, and just making sure that, not like I'm trying to make sure, but just expressing that we, we have stayed within that margin that we kind of expected. So it's nice to know that you're maybe a better.
Teeter-tottering really well.
Better predictor than the, uh, the meteorologist.
So next, we're going to move into expanded learning, AKA after-school programs. So I'd like to welcome Callan to the, to the, to the stand to talk.
At the stage. Uh, yeah, great, thanks. Hi there. So expanded learning programs is, is a pretty wide umbrella that does encompass after-school programs, but it's also before-school programs that we have at nine schools. Early back camp that happens for one or two weeks in August, depending on the school year. Spring break camp, um, four weeks in June of summer camp, tutoring, reading pals, and then other enrichment groups that we have within BLAST, such as Math Olympads, Drama, Viking, and also chess teams at six of our schools. So our vision for expanded learning is to create a safe and supportive environment for students to achieve academic success and reach their greatest potential as a student and a citizen. Our mission is to provide and reinforce high academic and social expectations for all children by providing students and families with targeted opportunities for enrichment, personal growth, engagement, in a nurturing and safe environment. So a history of our elementary programs, I'm going to do elementary and junior high separate. We do have programs at all 12 elementaries and all three junior highs. So in 2004, our elementary schools were awarded the ACES After-School Education and Safety Grant. It's a state grant which we still hold. And the 21st Century Grant, which is a federal grant which we do no long, uh, no longer hold at six elementary sites, so the ones that are listed there. At the time, those were the Title I schools. So that funding has been, um, in place since then, but in 2122, there was a state initiative for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which is ELOP. With that funding, we've expanded our programs to all 12 elementary schools. In 2223, we added Emma and LCC. 2324, we added Shasta and Sierra View and expanded, um, positions for our TKK students. And in 2425, so this year, we added Marigold and Hooker Oak. So finishing off all of our schools this year. At the junior high level, we got the 21st Century Grant, which is federal in 2006, Just for Bidwell and Chico Junior. In 2122, Esser Funding started a program at Marsh. The 21st Century Grant ended, and so the other junior highs were through Esser last year. And this year, all three junior highs are funded, um, out of ELOP. Our enrollment at the junior high level, there's about 120 students at Bidwell and Chico Junior and 85 at Marsh.
Can you explain why those are differentiated? Like, why is Chico and Junior and Bidwell in one lump and Marsh is separated out?
The need at the, at the schools, how many families that have enrolled or applied to enroll. Those schools are bigger in population as well.
I, I, I still don't understand why they wouldn't just be listed out as Chico Junior, Bidwell, and Marsh.
They have 120 students versus 85 students, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
That explains it better, thank you.
So the program structure at the elementary level is, um, the students get a supper meal, which is provided by Nutrition Services. There's a 30-minute reading period, um, then there's a recreation time, which is about 40 minutes, which is PE time. Then the 30-minute academic homework time. So depending on if the school or the teacher provides homework, it would be, um, homework support or it would be other academic enriching activities. Then an enrichment activity, and then at 5:15, there's free choice stations for the students that are remaining because pickup time is between 4:30 and 6 o'clock. At the junior high level, it's a check-in, a supper, same supper meal, um, as the elementary. Then they do a homework time, activity time, and pickup is between 4:15 and 5:15. So our staffing structure at the elementary level, each program is ran by a credentialed teacher and an assistant coordinator, which is at least a teacher sub at all of our sites. And then we contract with CARD, um, which is a partnership that we've had for a long time, a really strong partnership. We, uh, we pay this contract with our ELOP and ACES funding, and that provides us with a recreation supervisor that oversees the leaders, which is the frontline staff, three recreation coordinators that support those 125 CARD leaders that, um, that are working directly with our students. There's also 49 CARD leaders that are substitutes for those 125 leaders that we currently have.
So, uh, just for clarification, the one credentialed teacher coordinator, one assistant coordinator is per elementary site?
Yes.
And then the one recreation supervisor is that district-wide?
Correct.
And so they're?
And then the three rec coordinators divide them for each.
Sorry?
The three recreation coordinators are supports and each of them have four sites that they support.
The math, the math checks out. Um, and so is the recreation supervisor kind of like the, just pushing out what the recreation coordinators should be presenting to the frontline staff to be implementing at the school sites?
Yes, and she does a lot of the hiring as well for those positions.
And the credentialed teacher coordinator for each school site, that's their, that is their job at that school site? They're not, it's not like an extra-duty type of job?
Nope, it's a full-time position.
Same thing with the assistant coordinator?
It is not a full-time position, but that is their job. Sometimes they're student teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
A lot of times, they, they do need to have a bachelor's degree. So a lot of times, it's, um, for most of our staff right now, they're either in the credentialed program or taking a gap year between their bachelor's and starting the credentialed program.
And so when we're talking about the waitlist that exists, which I, I think you have the numbers.
Yeah, those are in a couple of slides.
And when we talk about like the need to potentially try to expand, where is there room for that expansion in this list of staffing?
We would need to add more Chico Unified support staff, so that, those credentialed teachers, and then more CARD leaders, and then possibly more recreation coordinators as well to be able to support more leaders.
Gotcha. So would it be like more, you, you said more recreation coordinators, right?
Yes.
So a few more of those, at least, you know, splitting it maybe two sites instead of four sites and, um, and more assistant coordinator, credentialed teacher coordinator? I, I guess I'm confused about their role if they're the one person on the site for TK through fifth grade, right? So.
Correct.
There would be, need to be more than one of those.
Yeah, potentially.
Would a one and a half work or would it need to be like another, yeah? I, I got my answer already in, uh, in, in Ms. Sufuentes's face. That's a no, by the way, for those of you who can't see her face. That's like, no, it would need to be another FTE if we were going to bump it up.
Likely, yes.
Good, okay, thank you, that's good to know.
Um, our ratios at, uh, the elementary level for TKK, it's 10 to 1. That is a CDE requirement. Right now, we're closer to 8 to 1, um, just because it is a lot of TK students that are in our programs, and in 10 to 1 doesn't seem to be enough supervision. Um, and then first through fifth grade is 15 to 1, which is a CARD requirement. So our, our staff members are, um, that's, that is CARD's requirement for all of their programs.
Do you happen to know if, and I'm not going to ask for numbers specifically, but is, is there a constraint for CARD to be able to increase staffing or get more staffing? Or have they been doing okay this last year or two or since we kind of came out of that crunch?
They're always hiring.
They're always hiring.
So it's, it's not necess, there's.
They're always hiring.
Always hiring.
Please apply.
Yes.
Okay.
Stephanie told me yesterday that she had 110 applications that she was weeding through.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and so I guess that would, that would indicate, my second question, but I feel like it's answered now, is if it is competitive enough pay on, on CARD's end, which we don't specifically have direct control over, I don't think, but.
No, what's difficult with our contract with CARD is they do need to have similar pay with all recreation programs that they have. Because the, the position is under the same umbrella of camps and youth sports and things like that. So it's, it's all, so that's where we don't have control over that.
Interesting.
Can I add one thing too with the CARD folks? Every semester, it might shift quite a bit because a lot of the CARD leaders are students at the university and Buick College. So their class schedules shift and change depending on what classes they need. So that's kind of part of the ebb and flow every semester too.
We have about a 50% turnover of these CARD leaders every year. And it's more often than not, but I would say throughout the year, there's about 50% brand-new leaders. Um, at the junior high level, there is one, uh, credentialed teacher that is the coordinator, and then it's actually school site teachers and student teachers with a sub-credentialed that are, um, doing the activities with our students. And they are at a 20 to 1 ratio, which is the CDE requirement.
Are the school site teachers getting extra pay?
Yes, it's an EA sheet, yeah. So our training and support for our staff, we do four Saturday program-wide trainings. We, we do them on a Saturday, so we don't have to close program to, to train our staff. We also have built-in staffing support. So my position, which is the district-wide administrator, we also have a teacher on special assignment that is supporting the 12 elementary schools, our recreation coordinators, which we already talked about, and then we do weekly onsite. I do a weekly meeting with each of the coordinators, and then the teacher coordinator does a weekly meeting with their CARD leaders. Our registration process, it's an online application for the program that opens each March for the following year, so in, in the spring sometime. Currently enrolled BLAST students maintain their spot in the program, and all other positions are selected via lottery. Remaining applications are put in, um, on the waitlist based on their lottery order. Per the CDE, um, students that are identified under the McKinney-Vento Act or in foster care are given waitlist priority. And we do our best to enroll them as quickly as we can. So some strengths of our program is we provide a safe place for students during the after-school hours. We provide enriching opportunities that may not be accessible to students that, that are not in BLAST, or if they did not have BLAST. It's an extension of the school day that's really focused on learning and growth socially and academically. It's positive community building and, um, you know, anecdotally, we have a lot of kids that become really close friends because they're in BLAST together, and, and maybe they wouldn't be friends just by meeting each other in the school day. But in the smaller environment, that is the after-school program, they get really close. We have increased enrollment each year, and, um, Tyler, do you want to click on that? So our enrollment history, so the purple line there is, um, the, there's two ways to enroll in BLAST. So there's Chico Unified enrolled, which is no cost to families, and we do have a select number of CARD enrolled spots which are paid, and there's not an attendance policy. So we have currently 195 families that are choosing that option because they do not want it, they cannot adhere to our attendance policy.
And, and just to clarify, the, the CUSD enrolled is, is anywhere from TK to five, whereas CARD enrolled is only first through fifth.
Correct.
So, so there's no paid option for TK and K?
Correct. My understanding is that CARD doesn't have the licensing to, to, um, serve students that age. So total in BLAST is there in the green. So in, uh, prior to 2022, um, total students that were in BLAST was 991, and we are now at 1,368? Err, 63? I don't know, I need a vision test here. Can you make a little bigger? Our current waitlist is high, but, but you can see, um, in the 2223 school year, we ended with 232 students in our, on our waitlist, and we added 200 spots. Even adding the 200 spots, our waitlist doubled. We added another couple hundred spots this year, and our waitlist doubled again.
The waitlist has doubled every year?
Correct, even, even with, um, efforts of growth. I do have some other numbers on there if you were interested.
I think we call that, we call that exponential growth in our waitlist.
Yes, and we are doing our best to keep up with demand, but it's slow and steady. I do have some other data there if you're interested on the waitlist numbers by school and then, um, by grade as well. So it's not a astronomical amount in TKK versus fifth grade. It's, it's pretty even across the board of, um, the need for families. Tyler, do you want to go back to the slides? Thanks. Oops. So constraints and opportunities for us to grow is our waitlist continues to increase in all grades despite ongoing growth in the programs. Expanded learning staffing structure has a capacity of about 155 right now with the staffing that we have in place. So like Caitlin was saying of, we would need to add more teacher coordinators and more leaders to be able to, um, go beyond that number. Um, and then our staff turnover is really tricky just because, um, the majority of our staff are college students that are moving out of town or class change schedules are only available so many days a week, that sort of thing. Yeah.
Could you go back to the chart that shows the, the school sites, the, um, you know, the next, that one?
So that's the waitlist number. So like currently at Chapman, there's five students that are in TK that are on the waitlist.
Wait, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong tab.
And if you scroll down, you can see the total number for each grade?
It would be interesting to see it as a percentage.
Yeah.
Since the number of enrolled TK is not the same number as the number of enrolled fourth graders.
I can get that for you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. That would be faster probably than me going back into one of our demographic slides and figuring it out myself.
Yeah.
At least I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I can add a formula, I can add a line at the bottom with a formula for that. Did you have any other questions about this?
No, I, I just, I hadn't had a chance.
You're, I don't think your microphone's on.
I hadn't had a chance to, you know, really look at, at all of them, and, um, I, I'd like, when Caitlin gets her information, share it.
Yeah. And our waitlists are bigger at our schools with a larger population.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see the percentages, um, just because no, no grade level is exactly apples-to-apples and no school is apples-to-apples either.
Yeah.
Percentages make it a little bit easier to compare. And see gaps in need, really, is what it is.
Um, so we're continuing to add more leaders to sites to get all of these sites at, um, at a higher capacity. Any, that was the end of my slides, any questions?
I have, Madam President or Chair?
Yeah, please.
I forget where you are.
Whatever.
I have some, some comments. It's going to be kind of a reiteration of some things that I said at our planning meeting, which was very helpful. Okay. I have three, four children, three, the first three of whom are boys. And they've all had some participation in, in after-school program, which generally is a wonderful program. It's great that we have that funding that makes it possible. A big reason why this pop, program is as popular as it is, I'm just going to state an obvious thing, is, is the, if you had the last slide, the top, very top bullet that you had on there was that this is a safe place for students after-school hours. You know, to, um, there are legitimate learning and stuff that goes on at, um, at after-school program, I can tell you from years of experience of participating in it. But also, it's childcare. And, um, one reason why families and parents in particular like to utilize those programs is because it's, it can be hard to fulfill some of your career obligations, you know, which are, are, everyone works, it seems nowadays, has some kind of a career and job. And doggone you, school people, you, you know, you all quit at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, leaving us with this, you know, uh, or, or younger, you know, earlier for, for younger kids. And so ASP, man, it fills a big niche.
Yep, it's a big need in the community.
And so, in a way, you're kind of acting in a role of, you know, you're, you're, that time, you know, you're in charge of them. And, uh, so just one aspect of your job is that you got to deal with all their, you know, little imperfections and, and, and the things that, that manifest themselves at home during that time. They're going to manifest themselves with you. What are those things? Well, uh, there's all their interests, all their energy, not all of which can easily be channeled into, you know, the playtime of dodgeball or, or, or the academic time and the reading, uh, you know. And meanwhile, we're handing them this electronic device, this laptop computer, that's going to be this ever-present, you know, force in their life, attracting their attention. And, um, so I'm just going to say that the, the, maybe, maybe make the unpopular point that my, uh, my, I, I know, uh, some, some, some kids who've pulled the wool over ASP staff's eyes just more times than you could ever possibly shake a stick at. You know, I know one guy who, uh, was, is fond of opening like 20 or 30 tabs on his internet browser. So that, you know, when a, a staff person walks by, you know, he knows which one to click on to, and then he can just click on to another one. And if you were to look at it, it wouldn't even look like anything recognizable on the screen. It would just look like a bunch of dots going across the top of the page. And, um, so, um, when ASP has staff members who are on board with the fact that they're in this role, that they are, you know, have like eyes like a hawk, and they're acting as a teacher or, you know, kind of a miniature teacher, if you will. You know, they're overseeing the kids while they're doing their schoolwork. You know, that's a huge asset to the family, you know, in the community, I think, you know? If a, a staff person didn't have that sense, you know, that that was, that was their job, was to, to keep on students and make sure they were doing their schoolwork and they were participating, uh, in a healthy way with these offerings, that's not a benefit, you know? So. So I would just encourage you to encourage your staff to make sure that, you know, you stay on those kids and make sure that they do their homework and do a good job at it. And if there's a game or an activity going on, you know, they need to be doing that if it's prescribed by the leadership of the program, which I guess is all of us, they need to be doing that active thing and not off in a corner or in a dark corridor, sitting on a bench somewhere, just surfing the internet and watching Mr. Beast videos one after another on YouTube, or worse, you know. And I can tell you that those things have happened. I've seen them happen with my own two eyes. I've seen the evidence of it on securely and we're, I'm the parent who's, who's got a handle on what my students are doing on their computers. And I can tell you that in after-school program, there's been a lot of time that they've spent, you know, at times surfing the internet, you know. They're not bad kids, not bad people. They're, they're great, but, but we need to do our job to create a disciplined environment. And so that's my admonition to you.
Thank you. Do you guys have any more questions for us?
I have a few, just a couple, actually, not a few. Well, two for now. So I was trying to go back into last meeting's total enrollments, but it just says enrollment, which means I, and I don't have my notes from last meeting, so I didn't have the numbers of like what our initial enrollment was, which isn't accurate. I tried to find the percentage of students who are waitlisted for the after-school program. It's 10% of total students when I was like, I kind of remember it was like 1350 to 1,400, or sorry. 12,350 to 12,400 students-ish is, I remember that ballpark number. I'm okay with numbers usually. But that's including high school. So I was like, okay, well, let's like shave off a few thousand for just TK eight. How many TK eight, what's our percentage of TK eight enrolled students that are on the waitlist for after-school programs? And it's roughly 14 to 16%. And that's a large number. If we go back to the first slide of the great list of programs that we are offering students for extended day learning, which I'm not even getting back to you yet, so it's a race. Ready? Who's going to get the first?
I like to win.
I went too far. There we go. You win. Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that number of students, 1,239 that were on the waitlist last, last you checked, are missing out on these enrichment.
Those are only students that are in, on the waitlist for BLAST. That is not the waitlist for before-school program, early back camps, student camps, any tutoring, any of those things, anything other than BLAST.
Anything other than BLAST. Okay, so then the, when you went over the BLAST, like this is what they do after school, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Fair, fair enough. Do those waitlists include families that have already left the district because they couldn't get services?
It possible. We, we do a query at the beginning of the year to weed out any of those, but as a family leaves, we don't, we don't do that monthly or anything. It's only if they were to come up next on the waitlist that we would see that they didn't.
It might be really interesting to know what that looks like because I was this close to leaving the district because I could not get affordable after-school care for my child, especially as a TKer or a TK kinder that I think is probably, if we run the percentages, is probably a little bit harder to get services for, for after-school care. That's lost enrollment, which is lost revenue, which is empty seats and, you know, all of the things that we are always talking about in running a larger school district. And so I would be concerned about that as somebody who is in charge of a budget or programming.
One thing too to remember, and I remember this from the site, is when families come into Chico Unified throughout the year and they learn about the programs, their names also go on to the waitlist. So it's, that's a consideration as well.
It fluctuates, yeah. But it would be interesting to see that, that outflow of families who left, maybe they didn't decide to leave because they couldn't get into services, but that was a reason that I was considering not, you know, not, I mean, that's a real thing. I can't be the only person in all of Chico, of over 100,000 people who had that, that idea. And, you know, when you have a school, an amazing charter school up the hill in Forest Ranch that is offering busing from Chico to get to their, you know, seven to eight student TK program, yeah, I'm giving a plug for Forest Ranch because it's my community. I'm not going to be shy about it. Like that is intriguing. Like you're guaranteed their after-school care all the years that they're there. And, and that's something that we have to keep in mind, not that we want to beat out Forest Ranch, but that we want to be able to, to offer equitable services for students. And so that 1,239 from TK to, to eighth grade is, is a pretty big number that we're not meeting. I mean, 15% of our, of our TK to eight students that, that aren't getting that.
And one, one thing that we talked about as we looked at those numbers, as it's doubling in size each year, is really, are we getting close to hitting kind of this is, this is the level of the list that it will continue to be? Is it going to kind of level out so then we could better plan for, okay, what would expansion look like and what will we realistically need?
Yeah.
And we think we must be getting close because it's doubling.
You're probably ahead of me on this, but like this is what our demographers do, right? They look at, at a cohort. So at this year, how many students in the TK program or three years ago, how many students were in the K program that were on the waitlist or, and that were enrolled? And then the, and then last school year, when they were in first grade, what did that number look like? And then this year, when they're in second grade, what does that number look like? That, I don't know if you've done that, you probably are working on it, but that really would create a picture of the trends that we're seeing in the need in this community for that after-school care. And as families are feeling, I mean, everybody's feeling that, that need to make ends meet and work the hours that we have to work and make sure that our students are, our kiddos are safe and, and enriched in the time that we don't get to spend with them because, you know, you, you miss out on valuable hours with a young kid as that's your child, like you want to make sure that those hours are, are valuable for their growth. And this is not to say that there are not options in this community, but they're not all accessible for families who are on a single income in their household or who have other constraints like medical bills or other things and are still not getting into those after-school programs. And that's not even to mention our staff members who have young kids who can't access our after-school programs and they are single-family income household families. And they also are special education teachers, so they have extra hours that they have to be putting in and yet they can't get their kid into after-school care. Like these are, these are problems. These are problems as an employer, these are problems as a support to our community, and I'm not bashing on you two at all, just so you know. I'm just saying it for the universe, for us to try to collectively over this next couple of months or year to really dig deep and find some creative solutions I know have already been brainstormed to address that 12,040 number and see if that's our kind of level-off point hopefully for next year. But like, how do we triple our program?
Yeah. And, and I think that it, true to everything you said, it, it really is a reflection of where our community is and the need has been doubling in size over the last three years because more people are at work. So no good deed goes unpunished. As we keep growing, we're just, we're, we're trying to keep up with what we can fill and then look at expanding.
Yeah. I think it's also, on a positive note, I think it's also a testament to the services that we provide and the value of those and that people find them as valuable. You know, the fact that they want to leave their kiddos with us for an extended period of time demonstrates trust in our staff and trust in our programming and the district as a whole. So kudos to you and all of those things and for building up this program that really is meeting needs for families who have a high need. And hopefully we can also meet those middle-ground families who have the need but maybe aren't winning the lottery.
So that, I think, concludes our presentation unless there's more questions. And then we just want to thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to our next thing, just something that, that we, we had discussed and member Tennis and I were the board liaisons for this workshop. And a workshop really is meant to highlight things that the district is doing well, but also to try to sort of pull out some ways that we can grow even, even better in those areas. So it's, it's meant to be a pat on the back in some regards, but also, you know, a little bit of a, of a hard discussion about where can we still grow? How can we still get better? Because nobody in here is perfect and nobody's ever going to be perfect, but we can always find room to grow. And the same goes for any kind of organization and I think it's important for us to, to dive deep and find ways to make improvements where we can with, with the resources we have. Early on in the presentation, they had mentioned, you know, a tiered system of, of offering services and families who maybe could afford a sliding scale type of situation for preschool and, and maybe that's something that the district can look into for our after-school care. I know that it's been brought up in the past. I also know that COVID got into the, into the way of those discussions, but there is clearly a high need for the families in this community to have support from our school district for those after-school services. And I think that it is, it is our duty as a board and as, you know, district leadership to explore all of the options within our legal limits to expand that where the budget might allow. And so I look forward to continuing the conversation, you know, in our lunchtime meetings or in a future board meeting if, if it were to come up as another item. So thanks for the opportunity for the workshop. I know I pushed hard for this one when we did our organizing because I went through an emotional roller coaster on this topic with, obviously with my own personal situation. We're, we're getting, we're getting by. The new routine is, is good. She has, my child has adjusted better than me, which is to be expected because adults don't adjust to change as well as kids do, like let's face it. Anyway, I just had to say that last bit of piece, that there's, there's definitely options, I think that we, we will be exploring to see how we can support that program and the amazing folks that are, are running that program. Okay, with that, let's move on. Caitlin's done talking so much, I promise. Eileen laughed at me. That's cute. Thanks. All right, next on our agenda is the Discussion Action Calendar. Under Business Services, we have a Discussion Action Item for Charter Schools' Measure K Projects Requests with Ms. Julie Kissel, our Director of Facilities and Construction.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. Bringing forward to you tonight, two projects from our Measure K Charter School Facilities Committee. They met last Monday afternoon and they approved two projects to bring forward as recommendations to the board. The first one is up at Forest Ranch School where they're going to renovate their existing restroom buildings, just small renovations, like some new sinks, some new toilets, cleaning up and painting their toilet compartments. I was recently up there and these items are, are really needed and it will make a good improvement to the school. The second project is up at Sherwood Montessori School at Chapman Elementary. And they want to add in some fencing and gates and secure entry systems at both their gate that they utilize on the Chapman Elementary site, on the, on the card end parking lot. And then across the street, 10 Cleveland, which is their property that they have right across the street. It will be the same system as you've seen at all of our Chico Unified schools, which has been working out really well. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback about them. So this will, in addition to helping Sherwood be a more secure campus, it will also ensure that Chapman is a more secure campus by tidying up that end of the, of the schoolyard. So if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Julie, did both of these go through the Charter Facilities Oversight Committee?
Yes, last Monday afternoon.
Last Monday?
Last Monday afternoon, yes.
Not on the holiday, but last week?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
They meet on the last Monday of every month.
The last Monday of every month, okay. I have no further questions. Do we have any public comment on this item? No? Do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move approval of both of these requests.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Member Orlando and a second by Member Robinson. Our last vote was unanimous, so we can all signify our approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it's unanimous, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on Discussion Action Calendar, under Board, Discussion Action for Leadership Search Contract with Butte County Office of Education.
Well, I will talk about this one just a little bit. Last spring, I let the board know that this likely would be my last year, that I would, my plans are to retire at the end of this school year, June 30th. Got a ways to go still. At that point, the board had asked that I look into local options for a leadership search firm. So I contacted Butte County Office of Ed and they have come up with a contract that you have in front of you, as well as a timeline that was distributed as well for the possibility of conducting a search for the superintendent for the 2025, 2026 school year. So Mary Sakuma, the superintendent of Butte County Office of Education, is here this evening and she can speak to this as well as answer some questions from the board if there are any. Mary?
Thank you Superintendent Staley, honored members of the board. It's really a pleasure to be here. I, I think I last visited with you when I had the distinct honor of swearing some of you in as new and returning board members, so it's good to be back. So it's our pleasure to offer for your consideration an agreement for Superintendent's Search Services. And I will go into some detail together with my colleagues, but I'd like to start by introducing my colleagues, one of whom I think you've already met. But we have with us this evening, Dr. Kathleen Wheeler. She is retired superintendent from Red Bluff Union High School District and she has been doing a number of different consulting jobs with the Butte County Office of Education. She first came to us to help at the time of the campfire and I had not let her leave. So she has done all kinds of amazing work in support of the students of Butte County. And so she's agreed to be here this evening to respond to questions and also to guide a few questions that we're curious about from the board in terms of the process. Also with us this evening, it's my honor to introduce Mr. Bill Cornelius. Bill is a retired county superintendent at schools from Sutter County, but he also served for a number of years as the superintendent at Biggs Unified here in Butte County. He also shared with me that he has grandchildren who attend here in the district and he has a vested interest in supporting you in finding just the right person. So I, I don't want to presume about what you've been able to review with the contract. I did understand that a few questions came in ahead of time and I did want to clarify a few things. First up, in regard to the length of the contract, if the board makes the decision to engage with BCOE for these services, that would commence as of your signing this evening and we would begin that process right away. The reason that I chose to offer up to you a contract that goes through the end of this school year, this fiscal year, is that in case there are any other cleanup items or training or governance support that you may desire, that avoids having to create a whole new contract. And the whole idea would be that that would be in support of the new superintendent, which of course means a new governing team. So we thought that would be important to offer that to you. If it's your preference that the contract end as of November the 20th, we can make that change without any problem because I know that's your goal for appointment. So I just wanted to let you know why that looked like it did. The timeline itself, which I understand that you received subsequent to the contract, and by the way, I do have extra copies, hard copies, if anybody should need a hard copy of the tentative timeline. of the tentative timeline. One of the things that Kathy will present to you is this idea that some of the dates inside that timeline, as we consider people's personal circumstances in regard to the team that I'll be pulling together for this, we might have to make some adjustments inside that timeline, but still with the goal of the board being able to offer a contract to the top candidate for November 20th. Excuse me, I have terrible allergies tonight. So at this time, if there are no further, if there are no questions for me right now, I would like to ask Kathy to come up to talk a little bit about some of the questions that have been going over in her mind and to see if we can get a little bit of feedback from you.
Really quick, Mary? Thank you for being here.
It's an honor to be here, thank you.
On the tentative timeline, I just want to clarify what you just said. That's kind of guideline at this point, but if we were to approve this tonight, we wouldn't be specifically beholden to those exact chunks of time.
No, other than your goal of November 20th.
And the goal is clear, for sure.
But for example, we had a brief meeting prior to coming in here this evening and just talked about the fact that probably we're going to have to move the timing of the initial screening back by a few days, or I should say forward by a few days, to allow us just a little bit more time because obviously we want to take advantage of this short window, make sure that we get all the top quality candidates getting their information to us.
I don't know if this is an appropriate question for you at this time, Mary, but if we do approve this contract tonight, how soon does recruitment start?
Well, recruitment has already begun in my own mind, just in terms of thinking about, you know, who might be the quality candidates who we know are out there, who might be considering. Obviously, I'm not making outreach calls or anything on your behalf. However, I do know that it requires, as an old friend of mine used to say, it's not just post and hope, right? We got to be proactive about this. And again, this team that I'm working with, we're talking about, okay, what would be the strategy to hit the ground running first thing tomorrow morning?
Okay, thank you. Because it is, I mean, it is a quick timeline, so I just was curious.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll turn things over to Dr. Wheeler.
Kaitlin's question prompted where my questions were. Let me just clarify, you said recruitment begins and we've got tomorrow. Would you be posting the Ed join and Ed Cal and other sources as needed at that same time? Because my concern was if we wait until after we've taken a look at candidates that may be known to us, we've lost out.
Oh, yes.
It needs to all be done at once. Is that your thinking?
That's a great question. So Ed join is a very quick post. That one's the easy button, if you will. Ed Cal and others do take a little bit more time than that. We're prepared to begin that. One of the things that we'll be talking about this evening is about the, some of the specific qualifications that you may be desiring as a board. And so what we, the initial posting will be sort of the basics, right, to get it posted and get the word out right away. However, as we get input, we'll be proposing to do some input sessions with the staff, with community, and of course with you. As we gather that information, we'll be wanting to clarify that with our candidates to say, you know, these are some of the top priorities in terms of the type of candidate that we're looking for.
Would we be able to have sessions with individual board members to talk about the candidate qualifications? Because we may not be all of one mind regarding that. And I'm hoping that that was in your thinking as well, too, that, you know, bringing in a process that allows us as individual board members to begin to add to that list.
So one of the things that we're going to have to be very careful about is that we don't create a serial meeting. However, I think we can figure out ways to get individual inputs from you and also to perhaps consider forming a subcommittee of the board, which I realize would, it could only be two of you. But if, we want to make sure that the communication is clear and that we don't violate the Brown Act in any way. So my legal degree's a little dusty, just kidding, I don't have one. But I would want to make sure that your legal counsel is comfortable with whatever process we choose. Thank you. I'll turn things over to Dr. Wheeler.
I only use doctor when I need dinner reservations, so it's Kathy. Thanks for having us back. It was nice meeting with all of you before and seeing what we have to offer and where you're coming from and we're excited about this process. It's probably the biggest decision school board members have to make. And there's a tough act to follow with Kelly, so we need to really do a good job of searching for the right person for this wonderful district. I, too, have an investment here. I have a great nephew in the system and he's had great experiences in all the Chico schools he's attended and now he's at the high school at Chico High. And so I'm, I want this place to be as good as it's been for him along the way. Like Mary said, the timeline is draft and we have already had to make some changes because some people aren't available to do the searches or the, conduct the input meetings. So we'll be moving some of those things, which means paper screening will move a little bit, interviews will move a little bit, but we will meet that timeline so you can make that decision on November 20th. So as far as that goes, that is a fluid document, but we will keep you posted if you approve the contract with us. So just so you know that, we will be communicating with you on a regular basis. One of the other things we need to talk a little bit about are characteristics and requirements for the new superintendent. And so I kind of like to discuss some of those things tonight because we do want to get that ad out. It will be an Ed join by Friday, I believe. So we want to make sure that we are getting as much information in that first document as possible, but we can also, like Mary said, add to it as we get more information from you on what you're looking for.
Aside from, aside from the five of us up here, is there input being gathered from staff or union leadership and other areas besides the five folks up here?
I think the tradition in your district is to involve as many people as possible. And we have people who have, Michelle Zeville, Assistant Superintendent for the county, has done a whole lot of work with the district in other areas. And she would be part of that, conducting meetings with staff, meetings with community members. And those kind of tie in with some of my questions tonight on who you want involved and how much involvement. But I think there is a tradition in the district in high-powered positions to make sure you're getting as much input from community and from staff as possible. So that's good.
I do appreciate tradition, but also none of us have gone through this before.
Right.
In this, in this.
No, it's a great question. We need to make sure that we are including, I think, including as many people as possible in what you're looking for. So you're getting that input from them so you know what the school community and the community wants.
This brings a thought, not too much of a, not too much of a tangent, but I think that, from my perspective, I was a classroom teacher in this district for eight years before I was elected to the board and I've admitted, I've admitted this to Kelly, so it's no surprise to her that I used to wonder what she even does. And I think that there is an aspect of, kind of mystique around what it is that our top, you know, position holder in a district needs, what those characteristics need to be in order to have an effective leadership role in the district. And it's been a learning curve for me, but it didn't take too long for me to figure it out after I joined the board. But, you know, when we are soliciting information from families or staff and folks who maybe don't get to meet with Kelly weekly, I think it's good to also be able to express and it's a good opportunity maybe to just demonstrate, you know, what it is the superintendent of a school district does for the district. We have, I know we have folks out in the community right now, again, a little bit of a tangent, so I apologize, that, you know, are claiming that, oh, the leadership of Chico Unified makes X amount of dollars and how dare them ask for a school bond. And it's not entirely true, but also harkens back to the fact that some folks just don't really understand what it is that that person in that role is in, is in charge of and does for the district, which is a big job. So, yeah.
That's a, that's a great point. And one of the things that we're working on is a survey that would go out and we would use Kelly in her office to figure out how to do all that and who it would go to. But we would like it to go to all community members or parents. So, and then community members as we can figure out how to get it to them. And that would be a written survey. And then we also want to include people to come in and work with us. And then that written survey, there's a lot of characteristics that you need in a superintendent and they're listed there and then they can prioritize what they think is the most important. And that's being drafted at this time.
I love using surveys as a way to help also educate, you know, X, Y, Z, this, that, this is how this works. What do you think would be best to fit that, that role? I appreciate that it's going to go out to everybody. I think this board, at least this board as post-COVID or during COVID era, we made a pretty big priority of including families and community members for, to elevate that voice because we want to all be able to hear what everybody has to say. So that's important.
And we would be, as we get feedback, both written and then through input meetings, that would come back to you, obviously. So you can make sure that that's meeting your needs and you're meeting the needs of the community in making your decisions.
Thank you.
Mary, do you want me just to go through my list here? And these may be questions you can't answer tonight, but they were just my thoughts on what we're looking for because the more we can put in an ad right away, the more people we're going to attract. So is a master's important to you? Does the new person have to have a master's? I would say at least a master's, so, but that's up to you. So that's one question.
Do you want to respond?
Sure.
I'm really talkative tonight. Eileen, that's two digs. She's getting me, man. Is there, is there a typical norm to state a, this happens on almost all job applications I've ever seen, an education component and/or equivalency of this, that, and the other thing to qualify for those, you know, those credentials as far as education goes?
Yes, but with the superintendent, masters is usually, at least a masters is required. Some districts say we're not going to consider anybody without a doctorate, others do not. That's not important to them. So.
I think the person should have a master's.
Okay, thank you.
Does it matter what? A master's in any, any topic?
Usually it's in educational leadership, but it doesn't have to be. That's up to you.
That'll take me out of the running. I was kidding.
That would be up to you.
Greek philosophy, right?
Quite handy, that'll come in handy. Doctorate, is it important for you to have that person have a doctorate in educational leadership or other?
My answer is masters, not doctorate.
Okay.
Agreed.
I agree. And that's not to devalue anybody with a doctorate.
No.
Yeah, just keep the field open. Experience is important.
Absolutely, okay. That okay with the?
I prefer a doctorate, but not a master's.
Okay. Do you want somebody who's had previous experience as a superintendent? Is that important to you?
I'd say those candidates are welcome, you know, but no.
I think that the verbiage, sorry, I've had enough microphone time tonight.
I mean, I think we're all probably, my guess is we're all on the same wavelength, which is that we definitely want experience as an upper-level administrator, but not necessarily as a superintendent.
Okay.
And then.
I agree.
Yeah, and just going back to Ms. Conkin's verbiage, preferred or something along the lines of, you know, yeah, it'd be nice to have superintendent experience, but at upper level, I think, is acceptable.
Prior district-level experience? Do you want somebody that's been a district administrator at the district level or would you consider people who have been site administrators and are making the move up?
Again, I think that, please correct me, colleagues, if I'm wrong, given the size of Chico Unified and the fact that a lot of superintendent's responsibilities are about managing a district-level team, I think that experience is, is important, yes.
I would agree.
Yes, agreed.
All right. If you have a superintendent who hasn't been through the Superintendent's Academy, would you be willing to have them participate in that?
I want to know what Kelly Staley would recommend on this.
I did do the Superintendent's Academy and I will tell you, what I took away from that was outstanding connections of people that I can call when problems come up and I, like, wow, I haven't faced this before. So it was really rewarding in terms of the connections that I made through that.
I had that same experience going through it, too. You had people, you could pick the phone up, whether it was one of the instructors or just people you met there, it was a great experience.
Are we using, are you recommending to use that as a qualifier?
No, to support them afterwards. Would you be willing to support them in that?
Yes. And also, they have Kelly.
Yeah.
I'll put pressure on her every chance I have, whether it's public or not.
Something we do need to put in the announcement, and I don't know if you've talked about this before or not, but salary range is going to be important for us to let people know where you are on that. So I think we need to come up with a range based on experience. Obviously, they're not going to start with somebody who has 18 years in the district. So looking at that and making a decision on that sooner rather than later would be really important.
Is there a, is there a source that we can look at, you know, in the last six to 12 months, things that have been posted that are kind of equivalent to our district? It's really hard to compare apples to apples. We know we have some of our go-to districts that we, we use comparisons for because we're not the same as some other districts that are regionally close to us. For, to get a more honed idea of what's competitive?
We could probably get more information on that from AXA and through research from the county.
Yes, we definitely would do that in your, in support of your decision-making. And this is not something that we need to know tonight, but we wanted, we just wanted to plant the seed for your own discussion. But comparisons would probably be helpful and we'll do some of our own work with that in the background, but also seek out some support from AXA and other groups.
And that's not something that's required by law to be posted on the job posting?
No, it is not. If, if you were to look at the Ed Cal, you would more than likely see most postings would be listed as commensurate with experience.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because California has a law that, you know, most, most jobs, I don't know what the rules are that differentiates, you have contracts versus salaried or something like that. Okay, thank you.
Next question ties in with paper screening. And in my experience, when I've done a search, then the search committee does the initial paper screening and brings candidates to you. But there are several ways to do it. You could have BCOE and some board members, BCOE and staff. But our experience has been that we do the initial screening, but that's, like I said, I told you when I met with you before, this is your search and we're just here to assist you. So that would be something we'd need to decide. And it doesn't have to be decided tonight. And that panel, that item will be moving just a little bit there. So something to think about. Interviewing, you usually do two rounds. Your first round would include community and staff and then the second round would be with the board. So I think that's a good process. You see them afterwards, you get feedback from that committee on what they saw and then. they saw, and then the, ultimately, the decision is yours. So.
Would we determine how many, uh, candidates we would want to come forward to the board in that second round?
Um, yes, you could decide that. We would look at the total, um, group coming up and see where we stand and how many, I mean, if we have 20 people that we think you should bring forward, that's a bit much. So we would be paring that down. And then you could a- ask that committee to bring their top three, top five, whatever it happens to be. If they interview 10, you only wanna see five, or you may wanna see all of them. And again, we'll be working closely with you, cause that's your decision on what you want.
And that would have to be during, uh, either a special closed session or a regular closed session? Is that my understanding?
You could do either. You could do a, a special or a, or a regular closed session.
But we know, like, what date we would need to do that by?
We need to do everything. We need to have a decision made. And in the background, we'll be continuing with doing, um, background checks on people. And we don't just check with their, um, people they list as references. We go deeper. We look and we, we find people that will be honest with us about what's really happening.
Everybody who's anybody in the education world knows, knows things about people.
We do not wanna see somebody and take them in the dance of the lemons. We want, we want the top person we can find for this wonderful district.
So, uh, just this, this hypothetical or prob- probable date, uh, when the board has the, the round of interview, the final round of interviews with candidates, um, how soon after that would we envision that the decision would be made and then we would bring that forward in our, in our open session for the final approval of contracts? Like, what's the, what's the timeframe in between?
I think you have to have, uh, November 11th to get it on the 20th. So we would have to have a decision and everything, uh, worked on before November 11th to get it on the agenda for the 20th. Like I said, we are gonna move a few of these things. They're a little tight, and so we'll be moving. The interviews probably wouldn't take place till later in that week.
Okay.
Uh, or the beginning of the next week. But in order to put it on the agenda, we're gonna have to have that decision prior to that.
My thought on the, uh, the number of people and what the, would be a, a decision that we'd make at the time.
As we see the candidates.
As we see candidates and we look at the thing. It's, it's not something that I, I, I don't think we're ready to make a decision on now.
And it's, yeah, we don't need to make that decision. I, confidentiality is of the utmost importance. So we will not, we don't like to involve a whole lot of people up front, so that that gets out us to what's going on, um, for both you, your sake and the candidate's sake. We need to make sure that we're protecting both you and the candidate, uh, as they move up, uh, through the interview process. So two rounds is good with you. Do the first round with community and staff, and then the second round would be, the final round would be with the board. Does that work for you?
Does that seem typical, reasonable?
Yes, that is typical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, even teachers typically go through sometimes the second round of interviews. So just making sure that just two layers is fine, not necessarily a third. Okay.
In the past, when I've supported districts in doing searches, sometimes they'll say, we want two panels on the first day. In one room, we might wanna have staff and two board members. Another room, we might wanna have community members and two board members, or whatever the configuration is. Um, you are able to, uh, participate in that first round as well. So just wanted you to know that as well.
Okay.
Mary, they could also participate in paper screening as well, if they wanted to have a couple of people participate there as well, so that they can say that they have seen the candidates.
Yes.
And what I've heard from the board, it's really important that you're involved in all faucets of this process and that you wanted to have board representation, representation at all different levels of the process.
Yes, thank you. That's why I was like.
Both board and, uh, staff representation, whenever we can have it. Our, our usual, uh, operation for upper level admins is to have teachers on the paper screening as well.
Yeah.
And I think that having especially classroom teachers at every level is, can be really important for easing whoever it is we select into.
And on that note, I, I, I think that the idea of consistency with how we run our, our interview panels, our interview sessions with our upper level cabinet members, with the added layer of the board being the final interviewee, um, maybe it is more appropriate, the first round being a split, you know, or a, a dual, you know, interview process where we have our community members and our, our staff, and then we have maybe our.
And that enables you to hear the comments from those committees too. So that helps you in moving forward.
It, would we run into an issue if we had two board members in one group and two board members in the other group in the?
No.
Okay. It would, it's, it's definitely just a different set of listening. So I just wanna make sure that wouldn't be a, an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How do you want to choose the community members and the staff for interviews? And there are several different ways you can do it. You could have Kelly make suggestions. You can have cited administrators choose staff members. You can have, you as a board can make those decisions. Or there's always that other category, how you want to, you know, maybe it's, uh, you want a representative from Kiwanis and one from Rotary or what, you know, whatever. So those are decisions that we can make down the road too. Those don't have to be made tonight. We just wanna plant these seeds. So we're thinking about where we're going and what we're doing.
I have, I have a feeling on that, that since Kelly has been, um, really involved with all of those community types, I'd like to get some input from her. Not that she's the final, but, but she's the one that has her finger on.
Absolutely.
Who's, who's been involved, who is involved, who has a background that's a, an in-depth one.
I'd add to that too, that, um, through the process of, um, these are just thoughts, I mean, I'm asking for your feedback. Um, through the process of, uh, determining the best way forward with a, a new bond measure potentially, there's been a lot of, uh, feedback provided by business members and members of the academic community and families and, you know, trying to get the most broad spectrum of our community captured as possible. So we probably already have a, a decent list put together. And I'm sure from there, we can, we can determine how, how best to move forward.
And I think I agree, um, that Kelly would be a great source because she is very active in the community. So I think that would be, um, a good choice to have her give, give you thoughts.
Also worth consideration perhaps, um, is that whoever comes in will be inheriting the LCAP and the plans we have, reaching out to specifically members of our targeted subgroups who you've worked with, so that whoever our candidate is can start building relationships, or at least no faces and names of people who are in those, who they'll be working with in the community.
Good points. Good points, all of them. Bill, do you have anything you wanna add at this point? Um, again, this gives us a good start. We're excited about working with you and, and making good things hap- continue to happen for Chico.
Thank you. Appreciate your help and your expertise.
And I hope I un-age like you have, Bill, in retirement. You look awesome.
I'm old. Um, thank you for inviting me and, uh, thank you, Mary, for asking me to be a part of this important decision that you all have to make. Um, my name is Bill Cornelius. Uh, I went to a school at Chico State many years ago, uh, played some football here, uh, coached here for a year. Um, and then we, you know, live in Huba City, but I have grandkids that go to Rosedale. Your after-school program, by the way, is great. We love it. Um, and it's always important to add more slots whenever you can. Very important. Love what's happening here. So I have a vested interest here. Um, and my, my talk to you is, uh, much shorter, uh, because we've already talked about questions, that sort of thing. But, um, this may be new to you, cause, you know, Ms. Kelly's been here for 18 years. So what I want you to think about a little bit is, when Kelly came in here, and if I may call you Kelly, um, she's awesome. Um, she had to have a certain set of skills for the things that were going on at that time. And what I would hope that you would look at is, when you are looking at a new superintendent, what are the, what are the skillset types of things, characteristics, are, do you think that they need to come in with? And where do you see them three to five years from now? Okay? You're not gonna probably find many superintendents that have 18 years of experience, that have the knowledge. It, it takes a long time to learn, plus just the God-given talents that she has. So take, you know, be, really be thoughtful on that. And, and, uh, you're gonna get a different sense of, my personal opinion, you're, you're gonna get a different sense of feedback from the community. They may not see the same things that you do. They don't always see the meetings that you had tonight. They, they won't always see the important decisions that you all have to make. And so, um, take a good, hard look at where you're currently, you mentioned a bond. And I know my daughter's working on the bond for you out of Rosedale. Yeah. But you, you know, what, what are some of the things that you want somebody to be able to come in with and be able to kinda hit the road running a little bit? You know, Kelly's gonna be able to give a lot of support. Um, but where do you, where do you wanna see the district, you know, at least for this year, or, excuse me, for next year, 2025, um, moving forward? And where do you see the district, you know, three to five years from now? Is this a person, it's kind of a crazy thing, but I always ask, when I'm done interviewing, whether it's a teacher or a superintendent or whomever, are they normal? Do they fit? If that makes sense. Do they fit with the, with the community that you have, with the things that you're working on? Um, so, a- again, those, those are just some things that I want you to think about. Um, any questions for me?
Um, a little bit of a question.
Sure.
Is it, is it reasonable to ask for either, um, I don't know if it'd be a requirement, but a desirable trait or, um, qualification being, uh, somebody who has had, uh, schoolside experience and/or, uh, classroom experience? Because I think that at the core of, of our educational system, what most folks think about, whether they are a community member without a, without a student or with a student, is that classroom, uh, relationship and how that person engaged with their individual child in the classroom. Um, and so, somebody who has had that perspective, I think, comes with a much deeper understanding and empathy for what it is that the staff is going through in the classroom and what the, the, the students and parents are going through with that classroom experience, and, and then on up. And I'm not saying that, you know, not having been a teacher is a disqualifying factor, but how do you kind of weave that desirable characteristic if the board thought that that was something that was desirable, um, into those, that list of qualifications that we kind of just went through?
Well, I know it's important for a superintendent to have classroom experience. They don't always have to have that. You may have a, somebody that was a counselor, that, you know, for all the years that they've been working and they worked into a, some sort of a district position and then, um, maybe became a vice principal and a principal. Rarely does that happen, but it could. Um, I think for you all to, to really consider is, when you have somebody with classroom experience, um, how are they going to work with their staff to work with kids in the classroom? Um, oftentimes, when I've interviewed superintendents, they talk a lot about their positions that they used to be in. They, they kinda sound like they are still a principal, if that makes sense. And so, y- you know, th- they need to kinda step away from just being the principal to be, how will I oversee the principal? How will I oversee all those folks that are working with the staff, that are working with, you know, the custodians or the maintenance or the transportation or folks in the district office? Or, in my opinion, every part of, of all our staffs are so important. And, and working with teachers, if you have not been a teacher, i- you know, it, it makes it tougher. It's not impossible. But that's, again, something that you may wanna look at if, uh, if you're going to have somebody with that skillset that's gonna be able to work with the staff that, a, a, a district this size is much different. I, I know I've, yeah, as a county superintendent, I worked with 12 districts. And so, much different than when I worked with Biggs or when I worked with Live Oak or, you know, the different places that I've been. So it is a lot different. Um, so here, it's, it's the management style that you're looking for. Is it the type of leadership that you want to have? Um, and if not quite there yet, is the superintendent's training gonna be able to help? Is Ms. Kelly gonna be able to help? Yeah, we can't be experts in, in every field. So as you look at your new superintendent, again, look at the skillset that you need to have now. And where, where do you want them to grow to be in three to five years?
And on that note, um, sorry, I wanna actually direct a quick comment at Kelly. Something I think would be very useful for us, um, would be some reflection from you, both on your own growth, your first couple of years superintendent, and based on the team you've got now in the district office, what do you see as the most important qualities? Um, I think that'll really help guide our search to make sure we find someone who fits in and, you know, has the strengths where they're needed or can grow those.
Okay, anything else?
As you think of those things, just like that last question.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're on YouTube.
And as you think of those things, just like that question about, um, site level experience, um, those are important things. Write them down and make sure we get to hear those. Kelly gets to hear them. And that's a great idea to have Kelly, um, kinda do a little chronological, um, update of what she thinks the needs are too, and what her needs were. If you can remember back that far, Kelly.
Thank you. Would that conclude our? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanna clarify for Caitlin. The reason why I enjoy hearing you talk is because you provide some amazing input.
Oh, thank you.
So it's not meant to be any kind of a downer.
Thanks. I'm also not great for taking compliments, but I appreciate it. Um, so this is, wait, yeah, please.
Excuse me, I was also gonna mention that, um, normally when you're looking for superintendents, January, February, March are months that you're looking for. Otherwise, you get to June, July, August. The pool is much different. You're way ahead of the game. Um, you know, we're starting early and that sort of thing. But it is a very short, uh, timeframe. So as you are moving along and you have questions or concerns, um, share those with Mary. We're gonna do, uh, we're really gonna work hard on bringing some good candidates to you. We will do our due diligence on checking background checks. My biggest issue I've had with folks in the past is, is if we don't do a good job of checking, not just with their references, but other folks that you kinda know, um, that's, that usually kinda gets you to where you have some really good, strong candidates that you can trust, uh, and you're not gonna find out something later after you've already hired them, that sort of thing. So we work real hard on that part. So thank you.
Thank you. And so I think that that concludes our presentation time. Um, and I'm not seeing any further questions from the board, um, except just for clarification. Uh, this contract comes with a $12,000 price tag, uh, that goes through the end of the school year. Um, can we clarify where that money would be coming from in our budget? Just?
Um, it, make this closer. It'd be coming from the general fund with the component under the board, cause the board is approving this contract and the board is in, um, search for a new superintendent.
Okay. And other options would be to just do this internally and not have an external budget amount, um, or to have, there's other kinda headhunter, private agency types that, that will do a national search for a much larger price tag, what, what usually is ballpark?
It'd be significantly larger than what is proposed under BCOE's contract.
Like tens of thousands of dollars?
Yes.
Pushing probably a hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
And my understanding, please, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the contract we're considering today has the 12,000 as a maximum accrued as we, you know, as, as service is completed?
That's correct. We're not a private business. We're trying to be of service to you. It would be, um, really for the cost of hourly rate for the consultants who are working with us, um, and then just actual costs of advertising and that sort of thing. But, and not to exceed 12,000. And my guess is we will exceed it, but 12,000 is your max.
Well, and if we do, we can, we can talk about that as we go.
Yeah, and we provide accounting and everything to you.
Of course. I mean, I gotta say, I'm really excited about the opportunity to, to work with BCOE in this regard, in that we were trying to find a balance between getting a big reach and having a neutral party. Um, I think, I'm, yeah, looking forward to service you guys. This is a totally reasonable price tag for the kind of work you're doing and having people who are local and who have a, a stake in us finding the best possible client, uh, forgive me, best possible candidate. Um, yeah, I'm looking forward to proceeding with the contract.
Madam President, I don't see an identifying, um, Madam President, I don't see an identifying number on the agreement. It just says the.
It's under Exhibit B. I think it's the last page.
Oh.
Page six. Based on actual costs incurred, based on the services in Exhibit A, but not to exceed $12,000. And this really is to help facilitate the process. We're still in charge of the process.
Right.
But we need the, the third-party help of, of folks who are invested in our district to, to hold our hands along the way because we haven't done this before. And, and you folks have. And that's, and, and you have a great understanding of our district. Chico Unified is one of the largest districts in the region and a lead, a leader in, in many aspects. And I think that it's important to have those, those outside perspectives to help keep things fresh. That's nice. Any other further questions from the board? Any public comment on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
We hire Bu County Office of Education to, to do this job.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Member Tennis and a second by Member Conken. We were unanimous in our previous vote. So all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. We really look forward to working with you.
Do we want to, Madam President, oh, I'm sorry.
Just want to say thank you very much for your confidence in us. We'll work very, very hard alongside you to make this successful. Thank you.
Q. We'll talk with you soon.
Do we want to bat around some names of people maybe to serve on this subcommittee that she made reference to? Because I'd like to nominate Becky if, if we would like to do something like that. Somebody mentioned having a, a subcommittee of the board, you know?
Yeah. I don't know, is, I don't know, I just don't know if it's something that has to be done during open session at this time, or if we have a certain process that we need to go through for it. And I'm not opposed to your nomination either, just not sure about processes.
I think we do need to do it in open session if we're going to assign people to different parts of the process. And certainly if we're going to have a subcommittee.
Okay. And for clarification, was I, was I clearly understanding? Sorry. You're not quite excused, but maybe somebody here that heard better than me, we all can be involved in the paper screening. Okay. And when we get to the, the, the subcommittees and such, we would split those out?
Well, I should clarify. The way we do paper screening is electronically. So it allows for everybody and you don't have a conflict. I, I don't, I shouldn't speak for your process. So I will.
Well, we want to go with whatever your process is that you'd like to use. So we're not dictating what you do. But normally, we would do the initial paper screening and then bring candidates to you. But you are more than welcome to go through all the candidates also. We just have to do that in a controlled setting and we.
Right. You would weed out the person from, I don't know, Washington who doesn't have a master's degree, for example.
Exactly.
Okay.
Or somebody we know that shouldn't be here.
And, and what you could also do is have a board member or two be part of your screening process. So they see all of the different applications and go through that with you.
Absolutely.
That's another way to do that.
Absolutely. This is your process and we're going to aid you in any way we can to make it a good process for you.
Okay.
And then the same would be true for the different interview panels. You could have one or two board members on each of those.
Yeah. When's, um, sorry, I don't have my, the calendar in front of me. I'm just wondering if this is something that we could iron out specifics of which board member would be kind of assigned-ish to, you know, how do we, how we proceed, if we need to initiate that this evening, or if we really should probably bring it to our regular session on September 18th in open session? Give us some time to wrap our heads around those next steps.
Either way, it works for us, knowing that that timeline is not accurate. So if you know that it really won't be on the 26th and 27th, it'll be probably moved down a little bit.
Moved down.
Move later.
Thank you. Some people see calendars from left to right and not top to bottom.
I think if we're going to put people on subcommittees, that we should make sure that is agendaized and notified. So I don't think we should take that on tonight.
Okay.
Worth having the public be aware of and weigh in on if they decide to do so.
Appreciate that. And, and that wasn't to, that's not to like, yeah, I think that it gives me a little more time to process the next steps, I think. Yeah. Appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Tennis bringing that forward for us to probably frame for the September 18th meeting, I would think.
So I'll do some outreach with BCOE to see what they see as the needs for different committees, different levels of the process. Bring those back. And then you can identify one or two people to participate in each of those areas. Or if you just want two people to go through the whole process, you could do that as well.
Do we kind of envision it being like when we do our workshops and liaisons where we kind of plug, see, see the, see where the openings are and plug people in, in open session kind of approach?
That works for me, Caitlin.
I mean, if that works for us, does that, does that work in general? Okay, thanks. It's just, that's all I need. I need a confirmation that that is up. We're used to that process. So that would be helpful. And if, you know, if there's multiple spots and multiple layers, then the same person could be at each step of the way. But some of us who are maybe a little less available just picks, picks up one thing here and there. So that we are all part of the process at some point. Some probably to a greater degree than others. Great. That sounds fantastic. Thank you. Anything else? All right. I think we'll move on to our next item. We'll, we'll see you, we'll see you soon.
Thank you for real this time.
Yeah, for real. Thank you. Wait, just one more thing. No, I'm just kidding. I'm not that funny, but I try sometimes. All right. That was item 4.1, sorry, 4.2. And we will move to item five, which is board member request to agendaize item. There was no request received for this evening. And so with that, we can move to closed session. It is 7:05. And we'll probably take about a 10-minute break in between and then be in closed session for some time. I don't think we need a motion to move to closed.